The pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation under indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Let the roll call show all is present. We do have a quorum. Jake, would you lead us in prayer? Please join if you like.
Heavenly Father, please watch over us as we do our best to serve our community. Please bless us and our community with your love and your guidance that we may treat each other with the civility, patience, and love that you would prefer. In thy holy name, amen.
General motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Hartley, second by Councilman Stettler. Any further discussion? None being on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same. Motion passed, all in the affirmative. Have any communications from citizens? Anybody online waving their hand? Consent agenda. Have a motion to approve the minutes April eighth, twenty twenty five.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes. I'll second.
Then moved by Council Whiteener, second by Councilor Councilman Nordean to approve the the minutes of April eighth, twenty twenty five. Any further discussion? None being on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same, motion passed, all in the affirmative. Have a motion to approve the bills, April ninth, twenty twenty five to through April twenty second, twenty twenty five. And a motion to approve the bills.
We approved the bills from April ninth, twenty twenty five to April twenty second, twenty twenty five.
Removed by Councilman Stettler, we approved the bills. It's been moved by Councilwoman Hartley, we approved the bills, April ninth, twenty twenty five, April twenty second, twenty twenty five. Any further discussion? Questions? Any questions? None being on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same, motion passed, all in the affirmative. We've we come down to permits. Uh, B and M, B and M Septic.
The the and run into the property line.
Move, we approve the building permit.
Been moved by Councilman Stettler, second by Councilwoman Hartley that we approve the building permit for B and M Septic. Uh, on four fifteen Pine, Water Tap, Seward Line. Any further discussion?
In the the special information, it says when the house, what type of house are we talking about, do we know?
It's on, remember I said those lots sold behind me on Pine?
Yeah, okay.
I guess they're going to place them back there.
Yeah, but what type of houses?
It's a brand new mobile home, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yep.
I don't think they've submitted the uh, building application permit for the mobile home yet, so I'm guessing that's coming after this.
It should, makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, they they ordered, they've ordered a brand new mortal, mobile home.
That's probably new enough, huh?
Yeah, it's probably gonna pass. And and it is Zoned R three. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same, motion passed, all in the affirmative. Building permit from Prema Klein, replace current fence with a new fence.
Move Leah.
Oh, go ahead. I'll wait till discussion part.
I move Leah, approve the building permit.
Do they even have to get a permit to?
I was, I was in here on that, um, and I just was paying my water bill. And she asked, and I said, just get one in case.
Cause I didn't have to when I did.
They're replacing exactly as it previously was, then you don't, if it's alteration and.
It's same, same style fence. She said it might be an inch higher, depending on where the posts are concreted in, you know? Inch or two higher, I said, I don't think you need one, but just fill it out just in case, cover you, cause she planning on starting this coming week, like Thursday, had family coming over to finish it. Knocking it out on this weekend, they said, well, just cover, cover your bases, worst case scenario, you don't need it. Best case scenario. You got it in place.
And part of that is, you know, just make sure that that's probably proper, just to make sure that there's not an alteration, like we had that one fence that was actually against our building codes.
Right.
And so it, I think that's the purpose of it, just to make sure that it's gonna be within code.
They're going on like a rail fence or something. She said it was gonna be the exact same, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, she's showing on here, it's just replacing.
Yeah, I know the north west side of it's been in pretty good due to some poor driving by a three year old.
Really? Think that dad would do something about that.
Didn't sound like it was gonna be wood or anything of that nature, but cause I asked if it was gonna be different material. Asked me, I said, well, I might as well get one, I don't know, I think the cost of the permits, like ten bucks, and I was afraid of setting a precedence of, well, we don't need a permit for this, they didn't need one. That was. And that was kind of my thing, too.
I agree.
No problem with it, so I second, there was a motion.
I made a motion.
Oh.
Okay, been moved by Councilman Stettler, second by Councilman Hartley that we approve the building permit for Prema Klein, replace current fence. Any further discussion? None being on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same, motion passed, all in the affirmative. Travel reimbursement policy.
So this was, Kami brought this forward last week, I thought it was a really great idea, and I still do. And so I've gone through it, I've made a few comments and um, and things I'd like us just to to talk about, you know, and to see, and like I said last week, I would, you know, working at the college, we have travel requisitions, we have travel vouchers, so I looked at those and our policies and procedures at the college and tried to uh, just, I mean, they work. You know, I mean, they just simply work, so that's why I thought that would be such a good idea. So um, anyway, um, do would you like me to go through my comments, or would you like to go through? Okay, all right, so I just don't wanna steal your show.
No, your show.
Okay, so um, under travel items to consider, um, particularly bullets or numbers one and two, uh, travel to prearranged meetings and then travel to official town business, anyway. Um, there's the uh, basically kind of defining what travel should be with a uh, an approved travel rec, and why don't I not make this a mystery, why don't I pass it out? I took the form from the college and and went through and made what I thought were town specific sorts of changes for you know, and but that's all addressed on the travel, which makes sense, cause I think those are things we'd like to see as a town council, right, or or as a supervisor who's approving travel for somebody that's in their department. So I went ahead and made those types of changes. I just, well, in the travel rec, I haven't changed anything in in what you put together, but I have. I, sorry.
I just feel that they need to be at least fifty miles from town to be able to get meals or overnight.
Why?
Cause it's getting a little expensive.
If I'm in Lander.
Lander?
If I'm there all day long, why would I or anybody else from where they're on town business should have to spend money out of her own pocket to buy ourselves lunch?
That's pretty close to your fifty miles.
It's no, why if I'm in, what if I'm in?
It is fifty miles, yes.
What if I'm in Riverton, same thing.
You can't pack a lunch?
Typically, no, you typically eat eat, okay, depends on the venue and what's going on. I don't pack a lunch when I come to town hall and work. I go home and eat lunch.
If I were, so my reference, of course, again, is the college, and I'm sorry if I give a noise, people, I keep going back to that, but if we were traveling on a day trip with the college and we were back at, you know, before twelve hours, we would, we would cover it ourselves. I mean, that's just how the rules would be for us at the college. If it's beyond twelve hours, which some of your meetings, I'm sure, probably beyond twelve hours, suppose, anyway, uh, at that point, we would do a, you know, a partial per diem, I think fifty percent. So anyway, it's.
Well, as of April first, um, he had seven hundred and eighty seven dollars out in meals from July of twenty twenty four and mileage, four thousand two hundred and eighteen. Cause you ate a lot at Wendy's. And thirty dollars doesn't cover just one person.
At times, we had business meals, sometimes they bought lunch, sometimes I did, that happens. There is times where we, I, we meet uh, with F CAG or whoever on on that, I mean.
I know, but we're not a real rich town here, Joel.
You know, I'm not a real rich mayor either.
Well, that's what I'm saying, lunch.
If I'm going for, and sometimes we have.
For twelve hours, I understand you'd get a meal, but not, you know, unless I'm fifty miles.
If I, if I'm, if I'm there during lunch, during meals, if I'm not if, if I'm we get a lot of business done at business lunches. Uh, my, you know, part of my job is to promote the town as you're showing.
No, that's.
And that's what I, I believe I do a pretty good job of that.
I didn't say you didn't.
But it's uh,
I'm just saying, we gotta make a budget that we can keep this town on track and we've gotta cut it everywhere we can. And there's some things that are just a little.
We do have a blanket, they're all too for.
Too, too much.
A travel request at college for a year.
I don't, there's.
Going on a special trip, that's not local travel.
There's many, many, many.
Well, and your vehicle should be ready here pretty soon, huh?
I'm gonna get it now, I'll get it.
The one's almost done.
Yeah, and this was a read.
And that's gonna be the town car?
It's not.
What do you mean it's not?
You're just telling me it's not.
Yes.
That's not my intention.
Is that what the city of council is reading?
Well, that's, I, 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 I told you my plan, you know, so they probably trade that, yeah, so that's still my intention.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not gonna read it though.
You don't have to.
Oh, so you override the council?
No, I, that's it, I said, you don't have to.
I was.
What I'm saying is what a word, word, words.
Well, we have a vehicle, we know that what's, we've put into it and everything else, why wouldn't we keep that? You're not gonna get another vehicle for that price.
Of course, oh, yeah.
And you're not gonna know what's wrong with it when you get it. Right?
We don't know what's wrong with this one.
Um, they have it in the shop right now, trading them out. I'm pretty sure they're gonna check it out.
Well.
And it's worked fine for the police department.
Yeah, with with the issues, but yeah. Anyway, that's another, that's another discretion.
I just really think that this budget needs to be tightened up on meals and.
Well, I, 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 I'm tired of wearing out my truck, I'd like.
Well, that's good.
Like to get a vehicle.
But we have one coming for you, the one we have.
But we, I may find a better one, so.
Well, I just don't understand why you wanna spend more money for the town.
I didn't say spend any more money. I would not, that was my, that wasn't my intention, spending more money. I can't spend any money without authorization from the council. I didn't say I was gonna spend any more money. I'd like a better suited vehicle, something that rides a little better than that vehicle, so.
So do you have a problem with food being every after fifty miles or going by the state statute deal?
I mean, this is for the I think if we're on, if I'm on, we're on, if you're on town business and you're during.
But sometimes I think you go to town business to go see the realtor that doesn't do anything for us, or there's just a lot of mileage that.
You have no idea how much work he does behind the scenes.
But we're gonna take him out of the picture in, but.
But, but anyway, but he works hard, I mean, it's uh.
You think he would come to us instead of us going to him?
Well, many times, the information he has is on and time for meeting with a client. And many, and many times he has the information on his computer, that's easier access to do the work in his office.
That's why they have Zoom. I'm just trying to take shortcuts here so we can save some money for the town.
Yeah, but we still need to do a good job.
We are gonna do a good job, and you can do it by doing it with Zoom and everything.
Well, lots of times it's not near as effective Zoom.
So if you're saying if you go to town to meet with him, it's okay for you to have lunch, too?
Well, if it's a extended stay and we're, and it's a bunch of hours, yes.
But that's only twenty miles from your house.
So you would prefer me to during, when it came lunch drive home, uh, eat lunch, you know, go there and back, take two hours, drive back.
I'm saying take your lunch with you. Take an apple.
Yeah, it's
I think uh, the forms that Mark has put out in front of us are pretty black and white, pretty adoptable, I think, from what I see. Um, a lot of it cited off of the state statue, um, bombing statue nine dash three dash one oh two. The meal allowance, actual expense and exceptions. And um, I think is necessary, I think it uh, can be utilized, I don't think uh, in this regard, has to be something that um, necessarily would need to be filled out daily, um, per se, I think it's something that we could add, as he has in the sheet, dates that could be submitted at each council meeting or um, with the explanation of what the meeting was, et cetera. On the other sheet, I'm guessing the personal vehicle with the town vehicle box of option of rather taking personal vehicle, that's the rate of travel reimbursement at half of what.
Correct, I, I think that's reasonable.
Of what the, if the town.
The what?
I think that, that was, I think that's reasonable.
At what this town vehicle is.
Personal cars and the town vehicle, then it's thirty, it's.
Yeah, just as you put it, just as you put it in your, in your deal, Tammy.
Right.
No, I think that's one reason.
And then I, I, I think I'll venture to say, I think if, you know, we can on the um, I get there's a little bit of gray area. But with that being said, you know, I understand if you're at a meeting in Lander and it's forty nine miles, right? I think we're all human enough to understand that that is warranted um, for meals in that, in that regard, at least I am. But if there's something going on at Riverton, I, I would even be willing to possibly look at um, what that entailed as far as.
No, I think it should be warranted. No, I just don't think I should go over and buy a, buy a meal just because I'm in Riverton.
Well, and and that's where I'm going, I, I think, you know, if you're in Lander and you're fifty miles away from home, I think that's credited.
Right.
Um, I think if you're in Riverton, um, you know, maybe the, we put into something into effect that the first three mills are or the first two mills are on you, the third one could be on the town, per se. Um, so what I'm implying is if you're in Riverton for a twelve hour day.
Well, when we um, travel now, we only give them one meal anyway. Like when we go to WAM and stuff like that.
I don't think so, you provide breakfast, lunch, and dinner, right?
Well, well, usually, usually you will get breakfast and lunch at WAM.
Mm-hmm.
Not all, usually you'll get breakfast and lunch.
Yeah, coffee or breakfast, and then they have a dinner, so.
Right.
And I think, I don't know, I mean, when I, going from my experience, when I worked for the state, um, we were down there for training, um, that they provided meals, and I decided to go eat at Wendy's on my own, that's my problem. Like, if I don't like the food they are serving me, the state is like, well, that's not, not our problem.
Yeah, it, right, if all the meals are provided, then there's no per diem, as far as you know.
Yeah. And I, I, I don't know, I mean, I think if you're in Riverton for uh, all day conference, you know, whether it is, you know, obviously you're not gonna be coming back and home, back and forth, you know? If it is one or two or three meals, that, you, Riverton or wherever, you know, versus, you know, if I, if I went to Riverton to meet with the county attorney's office, and then I stop and have lunch um, like the public works crew used to do.
That's what I'm saying, like, if it's.
They would go to Riverton and charge the town lunch every time they went there to pick apart for a vehicle. I think that's abuse of the meal privilege. I do.
Saying, like, if, if it was an all day eight hour, or you have a two hour meeting here and a two hour meeting here, and then a two hour meeting here, accumulates eight hours for the day.
Yeah, you're not gonna go back and forth, you know, it's still an hour back and forth, if you have a way back and, you know.
At that point, eight hours perhaps, then.
But I think with these forms, I think it has the explanation where you explain, you know, something in there, why, you know, I had these meetings, so therefore it's explainable, you know, undocumented, I think that covers.
And, and that's the beauty of a travel requisition, it kind of gets it out there, they can see what's happening, and you can see what's going on, and you can approve or disapprove.
Well, and the good, the good thing about it is, is if you have breakfast and it's nineteen bucks, you're getting credited back sixteen. The other three dollars is essentially you.
And my only question, I guess, still goes to discretionary travel, because there's times that I can't plan. It's not really, we, I have a town vehicle, so when I, that's, I'm not talking, but, you know, the mayor or the council, you, you might not be able to plan that prior to, and maybe looking at the wording, you know, submitted prior to proposed travel, you know, there could be something that comes up tomorrow that we didn't know today. And so it's not feasible for the mayor, for example, to wait two weeks for something's already passed, so we have to word that, whatever that looks like in some way that gives that ability to have discretionary travel without prior approval. I think if coding, codifying what that includes, I guess.
Right, you can have, you know, if you know, like, the WAM conference is coming up, you can put it in a travel rec for the WAM conference, you know? Uh, but local travel, particularly, I mean, I know with the uh, Fremont County Association of Governments and WAM and other things that that are going on, um, showing people rail, rail car facility, whatever, you know, it's just a bunch of local travel and you, there's just not, frankly, it's not practical.
Yeah.
You know, but what is practical would be like a blanket travel request, you know, where you cover within a certain radius, and maybe it's a fifty mile radius, or maybe it's a forty, I don't know what that mileage would be, but just it'd be spelled out on the travel request.
Well, I guess where I'm going with, would it be another form like that would differentiate between local travel versus this travel, two different things?
We, we call it a blanket travel request.
Okay.
So in my division at the college, I have faculty to teach in, what, Washington Key? I've had folks, things going on in New Boys, I've had things in Lander, you know, so I, every time I needed to travel, I wouldn't fill out a travel request, what I do is, I I every time I needed to travel, I wouldn't fill out a travel request. What I do is I have one travel request. Frankly, it was for the entire year. And it was set on a certain amount, and if I exceeded that, well, then I needed to go back and get another one approved, you know, but. But it was still understood for local travel, that's what it would be. And I it for mine, it was just really mileage. You know, but it could have been, but that was because of how my my situation was. It could also include, and you can see on the the travel rec form. It can include meals as well. I mean, so what we're to be doing as a, in in this case for the mayor's travel. We as the town council would be the appropriate authority for that. So but if somebody's traveling for Chris. You know, the police department, then at that point. They would, you know, you would be.
As long as I have a budget for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the voucher form, wouldn't that be essentially utilized?
That'd be something that goes to the clerk, I'm assuming. So just trying to.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think that could be utilized kind of as the blanket travel form.
Right.
That doesn't allow you to check out a card that's reimbursing you.
We have a PD card.
Well, this form is you're fitting the bill and then being reimbursed.
Oh, yeah, 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 I see. I understand. Yeah.
Well, it typically, I mean. Yeah, so if you if it's per diem, you just get the per diem. You know, but if it's a per diem and mileage, then you get then you.
I guess where I was going is is if I use my town credit card and then I'm assuming that you would, the council would want to review these. At some point or not, I don't know. But if I use my town credit card and the council's like, no, we're not paying for that meal. Then I have to pay the town back, you know, if I had the credit, you know, so.
But if it were.
Pre-approved.
Pre-approved, right? Blanket travel request for that sort of thing, then.
I was talking for more like local travel.
Yeah, well, local, local travel requires mileage. So.
Unplanned local travel.
What's that?
Unplanned local travel.
And that would be covered under the blanket travel request. It's for a set amount and we could do it for. A year, we could do it for six months, we could do it for, you know, a quarter. It it doesn't, you know, whatever. Whatever makes sense, because it has dates, we can put the dates on that and they could work for however we would need it to work.
So would we do? In the policy, would we have a set daily per diem? Like if you're traveling like you have up here, I you know, wherever it's seventy five dollars a day or whatever. Is your per diem for meals and whatnot. If you're traveling locally, it's twenty five dollars a day or something like that, that is that what you.
GSA rate, make it simple.
But GSA rate doesn't cover per diem. Per diem is different than mileage.
No, it covers. There there's GSA rates for meals.
Yeah, and we actually.
But that's outside of the fifty mile.
We would call per diem with the meals and then we'd also call per diem or mileage separately. So it's. Per diem is food and then mileage would be separate. And there are rates for that. I mean, there's, it's quite an amazing, I mean, you can go. I almost brought a sheet today that shows, well, if you travel to San Francisco, this is what your per diem rate would be. If you went to Miami, it would be this, you know. Well, we don't have Miami or whatever, but in Cody, in Wyoming, it's Cody. And Sheridan of all places that are on the list for the fence. And but then the rest of Wyoming just has a. General per diem rate of sixty three bucks.
They used to, when I looked at had separate rates with Park County and Teton County. They were considerably higher.
Yeah, so maybe it was, it must have been Teton County, not Sheridan.
Yeah, yeah. A little more expensive.
They're not here.
Yeah, Cody, Cody, yeah. Teton and yeah, and the rest was covered with the same the same rate.
Right, and the highest, of course, was Teton. I saw that too.
Yes, yeah.
No surprise there, right? So. This was meant to be just a starting point, a talking point to try to say, this is how it could actually be managed and how it could work. And the information is there. And then once you get back, this is where the travel voucher comes in. This is where you feel. And this, if if there were trips that maybe you filed these, if you know, if you had a, let's say you had a a quarterly.
Correct.
Travel record. Well, then, but you wanted to get reimbursed for your out of pocket expenses on a monthly basis. This is what you would use with the receipts and all the stuff that came along.
But there there's things that we can plan for, but there's things we can't.
Well, I guess that's where I maybe got in the weeds a little bit. The. The policy, whatever it says, is going to dictate how these are used. It's not going to be spelled out on these forms, kind of what you're saying is.
No, but the forms address at least.
Exactly, yeah.
And issues that are on here, the town put together.
No, no, I'm saying that. The policy would actually spell out like how it would be used, like you were saying. That's what I was saying. The written policy. Would spell out all those things.
Yeah, and and I can change the forms to whatever.
No, I think it was good.
If I may, yes. I feel like. I do believe that you're working your. Butt off trying to promote the town of Shoshone and doing the best you can and doing what you think is right. I believe that you are very concerned about fiscal responsibility, which is what you are hired to do. And I mean, I think we're all in that same boat. And I wonder if. We don't have to adopt policy today. We do have to do something with the travel budget and all that by the end of June. I wonder if. You played around with trying to fill out. So what we get, what we get is a mileage reimbursement a hundred and forty bucks. Pass it or don't. That's what we got.
You didn't get the the sheet that went along with it?
No, what I got was what was in the the council packet.
Yeah, it should have been a sheet that I filled out that explains what the mileage is.
Okay, so what I'm saying is if we had a little bit better communication with one of these forms, maybe play.
Well, no, I think.
And send it around so that before. Well, like throw it in the council packet or something.
No, I agree.
A little bit more communication on that end, maybe grab a form, start filling it out and giving it a try for a little bit.
No, I got no problem. But I did fill out a form to explain what the travel was for. Spent four days in in at the CWC.
Did you see it? You see it?
His travel before.
Yeah, it gets included with the vouchers. That's.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that you're doing it wrong. I'm saying.
Only one seen it's the one that's signing the check.
Oh, okay. I thought it went out there.
No, no, we don't have that. We don't get that. So maybe if you were to pick some kind of voucher form and start filling it out and sending it out. And then it would help explain better to everyone what's actually going on. And we've got time on the budget.
Sure.
That's the end of June. But and then that would give a chance to kind of try something out. Hey, is that gotta work? We gotta tweak that a little bit. Before we actually adopt a policy that may have to be revised. It's just a thought. You know, if we did a little bit, just just kind of started doing it without it being a policy, sending it out to everybody, filling out the form. Include it in the council packet. That might be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, they provided lunch earlier today, but it was long days every day.
And and the purpose of the forums is to try to get things. I mean, if you read on the travel request. Prior to travel. Right, so and I in your documentation, it was prior to, you know, it was.
We could, we could amend that too.
To say prior to.
Or after.
Prior to proposed travel when possible.
Or or after, I mean, right? Like if if you travel and don't.
If you have whenever possible, that would clear up the form to be valid for before or after.
Or sort of what. Mark was talking about, because there are trips that just pop up.
That would be the.
That would be.
Prior wherever possible.
Right. But I I don't think it should be in place to be a six month. Or that kind of gets us to where we're already at. Or quarterly even. I think it should be maybe once a month or, you know, so it's not something that we're eating our time up with every single meeting.
Yes, I think that, you know, the. In the documentation of the policy that would be written for the town, that's where we could define what what would be the valid use of a blanket travel request. Versus an individual trip, you know, travel request. I mean, so, because. There's there's just, just because of the, like you said, really, and it's true, the the time that it takes. At a council meeting to go over that could be pretty amazing. So if we had the discussion on the blanket travel request, then at that point, it's done. For whatever time period we decided that would be. I mean, it could be done on a monthly basis. It could be done on, like you said, whatever we decided to, you know, but it probably is very dependent on the nature of. The travel, what the travel would be.
Our attorney was gonna say something.
Oh, no, that's all right. It was a question. It was answered.
Well, that's the document that the attorney had. But that only addresses mileage.
Okay.
That goes with each. One that.
And that farm still could be used or, you know, it could be used. With any other travel.
Right. This one's a little bit more. Better broke out, though.
You know. We we do have in our employee handbook, a mileage per diem compensation. Breakout. Yeah. Mainly for employees, so when meals be not exceed GSA rate. Mileage by whatever the federal rate sets, that's what we run by.
That's for employees.
Well, we are. Well, we are, we are, I know, but and. That's all about it.
I think the biggest thing here is to rather than keep kicking the dead horses, obviously. The parameters, um forms, we like them, forms, whatever. But the parameters of what is going to be allowed and what isn't going to be allowed. Whether that's the fifty mile range. That's you're in Riverton for four hours, you don't get lunch. You exceed six hours, you do.
Sure.
Or whatever that is. I I, right, that's.
But it's some guidelines.
The 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 parameters of what is going to be allowed versus what isn't. And so that's obviously what we need to dictate. From this point forward. And then the forms. How we're going to utilize those. And I like Jake's idea of trialing them, but we need to set our parameters of what.
Will and won't be acceptable.
What will and won't be accepted because of trialing them of with. What will and won't be accepted, then we're just kind of shooting in the dark. So I think as a council. I'm only one person. I think we need to decide what we're gonna set as our parameters.
Don't you think we need to look a little look at this and address this maybe next meeting after we look what Mark provided us and.
Well, I think the GSA rate is on there for meals and mileage. So I think that is black and white for me. For Fremont County GSA rate at seventy cents a mile, which is what we're currently operating under. I like Mark's box and Tammy's breakdown of if town vehicle is available. And you choose to take your personal vehicle, you'll only be reimbursed at thirty five cents a mile, which is half a GSA rate.
Yeah, I think that's good.
And I think you're on board for that, and I am for anybody else that has that option for the vehicle. The in-state per diem rates for breakfast, lunch and dinner are outlined there. Sixteen, nineteen and twenty eight. And that's more than. I get as a. Coaching. Whether I'm in state or out of state, we get ten dollars for breakfast and fifteen dollars for lunch and twenty one dollars for dinner. So that's significantly more. But it is what it is, right? So I think that's fine. Um I think what we ultimately need to decide right now is. What mileage perimeter is allowed and what. Hour mark before we decide we're gonna pick up lunch, dinner, etc.
I think it should be fifty miles unless you stuck there for more than six to eight hours.
Have an ore. Distance or time.
So.
What's your thoughts, Mark? No, I think that's fine. I, you know. I bring the college stuff because it's an example.
Right.
You know, but it's not the town. You know, so having different roles, different setups for the town. I think the procedure, the process is probably pretty similar, but the details of that really should be town. Based, not college based. You know, I mean, what what makes sense for us. So so I I'm I'm playing with that. I I think six hours makes sense. You know, I mean, to me, it just does make sense. I mean, if you're, I would think if somebody was traveling to Lander. It'd be it'd be more than a six hour trip because there's travel there and back and time in the meeting and meetings. With a bunch of government officials are never short. So.
And that's in the fifty mile range right there.
Fifty plus miles, specifics matter. Does that include breakfast, lunch and dinner?
Lander is under, lander is under fifty.
Well, we're we're.
And that depends if you go far, my BLM, my it's fifty.
It's forty eight, forty nine months. So we're given the grace period there. Does that include one meal then? Is that what we're saying here?
I'm saying one meal.
I think it just be one meal.
Well, it's almost never. On these eat more than one meal.
Yeah.
No, you're there long, you know, almost never.
Overnight.
So then in Riverton.
Overnight's a whole different story.
Yeah. In Riverton, six to eight hours. Time limit, we're saying one minute.
Yeah.
Or you could say six hours minimum.
So what if you get invited to a business lunch? There are those.
Well, they're buying, right? Go.
Not always.
Then you can't go.
I mean, there's.
Well, even that, I think it depends on what the business lunch is. I mean, if we have somebody coming in town who wants to come and bring. Some sort of economic development to Shoshone, come on.
Right.
Come on in and we'll we'll pay for your lunch.
We we did that and went to Thermopolis.
Right.
Exactly that.
And that's over fifty miles.
Not Thermopolis.
Thirty two miles.
Oh, please. Makes it sixty four.
Well, I'm I'm assuming we're both saying.
I heard you're talking one way.
Or even even then to Riverton and back, it's not fifty.
No, it's not.
So I guess I'm right in there tomorrow.
I'm just saying, we, Curry railcar system, we took them to took them to Tomatoes.
So we're saying six plus hours. Under fifty miles. Wow, it's one minute.
So that's fifty total miles. Not fifty mile radius, but fifteen.
A radius, I mean, would make some sense.
I I I would say a radius would probably make more sense. Because at that point, then you could abuse it a little bit, right? Like you could. Drive here, drive there, drive there. All of a sudden, you're at fifty miles.
See, and I have no problem with saying twenty mile radius. You know, because that now at that point, Riverton would be in that six hour time period, because you could be there for six hours and I think that'd be fine.
So I I think the six plus hours under fifty miles, you'd have, if you're under fifty miles, you have to exceed the six hour mark to get it right.
And Wendy's is cheap, that's why.
On on the business lunch, what what if that.
That's different. That's economical development.
So I I think we don't really need to put anything there.
Well, that's what the council mayor has a discretionary budget for us, which is separate, things like that.
Okay, so we don't need to put that in this travel policy.
Just, yeah, typically, that's what that would.
When we do our budget meeting, we can put that in his discretionary fund.
Yeah, because that that would be something completely different um than just travel.
We've outlined our potentials.
But I. So. It's six hours plus more than fifty miles, is that right? Radius, because I I I really think twenty miles makes more sense to me because of the business that happens in Riverton.
So so that's where it's at. If you're at fifty miles, you get a move. If you're at twenty miles, but there for six more hours, you can get a movement.
So it's an or situation.
Right. So if you're in Riverton and he's there for four hours, he don't get a move.
I'm fine with that.
But if he's there for six hours. Then he would be able to go get lunch.
An or would be great in there. I'd be fine with that.
So would I.
I I like your document. I I like to see it updated. I mean, that's really where I'd like to go with, you know, what Jordan's kind of helping us put together here. I think that makes a lot of sense. Um I can give you my notes if you want. Um, I can give you my notes if you want. And you could decide to accept them or not.
Okay.
That's certainly up to you. Some of them are questions. I have some comments on the back here. Uh, cause something that wasn't covered in here was alcohol again first.
You can't do that.
Yeah, we, we have, we actually have a policy that says no.
That's fine, but I didn't read it in here.
Yeah.
Right? So, you know, I, and I, that's good. That's good. And, you know, something about tips limited to twenty percent.
Correct, twenty, twenty percent. We adopted that as.
Like a year, year and a half ago.
It's a separate pub that all.
Yeah.
It just says any meals being bought by the town.
Is that in the policies? Or is it, is it? It's in the credit card policy.
No, it's, we haven't updated this, but we did, we did, uh.
We have a, we have a credit card policy.
Right.
Yeah, this is going to be the update of all that. So.
Right.
Okay.
I just suggest this, let's make it a. She's in here. One document, so we don't have to go all over the place to try to figure it.
Okay.
The town policy.
Okay. Everybody happy?
I am.
Alright.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep. Thank you for providing everything you've provided, Mark. Add a little to it and tweak it and be, it's still perfect.
Right, so are we, are we gonna table that? Are we gonna work on a? Something that we're gonna vote on next week? Are we gonna vote on this right now? What, what's the council's?
I say we make a, I say we make a motion to adopt. A travel policy.
We don't have a completed product. To adopt.
Well, I think with the parameters, you know.
With potential parameters added to the sheet.
I think we can get something, you know, between. The mayor, clerk, myself. Whatever council members type, type it up to review.
Probably better put in an ordinance. Or.
Resolution.
Or a resolution, yes. Or a resolution of work.
I think a resolution is the best way to go because that way it's. A lot easier to make changes needed or warranted in the future versus ordinance.
Agree.
But I'm saying we could get something typed up, sent out next week to the council to kind of review. And that way, by the time the next council meeting comes, everyone's kind of had their input and. That to me would be the best way.
Table?
Yeah, you're, you're gonna wanna vote on final product by resolution.
Right.
Or, or have a discussion and have it go back, but you're gonna want a final product to vote.
Table it then?
I think that'd be the most prudent thing to do. We have three weeks to do it.
Second. Move my councilman ordine, council, second by council step, we, we table. The travel reimbursement policy.
Again. Table it again.
Again. Any further discussion?
Just that we, um. Add the provision that we talked about.
Yeah, we'll get all that stuff that. We talked about and. And we'll give us the mayor even kick it out and you guys can. Finalize it and. We'll be good.
Any more discussion? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed the same. Motion passed only affirmative. Uh. Wind River Visitors Council budget is next.
Why do you think? Thank you guys for your patience.
Sorry. Thank you for having us here. Do I need to turn this on or is this on?
It's on.
Good.
It's on.
Okay, wonderful. My name's Helen Wilson, um, executive director of the Wind River Visitors Council. We have several board members with us tonight. We've got Dave Furman, Helen Gordon, Hal Heron. Um, Mayor Joel Highsmith, uh, Marilyn Midhour and Frank Welty. Um, big group. Um, we do this every year. Um, Shoshone is part of our joint powers agreement and every year you get to, you get to see me hear a little bit about what we're doing. Um, and then we go and, and get our budget approved, um, with all of the, um, members of the joint powers agreement and the county commissioners, which are part of it as well. Um, for this year, we had a, the way that our budget works is we use the previous full fiscal year's revenue as our budget for the following year. So we don't project, we just have a set number. So our lodging tax for this upcoming fiscal year. Uh, nine hundred ninety-four, uh, zero, three, four. So lodging tax revenue has gone up. Um, and it, it seems to be growing every single year, um, currently. We also have a destination development program. I put the budget for that as zero because we only receive that every other year. So we have it in this year's budget. We won't have it in next year's. Hopefully we'll have it in the year after if that program continues. Um, part of our program, um, we have, the Winter River Visitors Council has a unique program. Called the Tourism Asset Development TAD Program. And we take twenty-five percent of our revenue. And, um, and divide it up in the communities based on how much lodging tax revenue they bring in. Hudson and Shoshone don't bring in very much lodging tax revenue. So we do a flat rate, which actually equals more than what it would look like if we were looking at the actual numbers. So from nine thousand eight hundred, we've now gone up to nine thousand nine hundred. And your chief did a really nice job this year of writing an article for us that we put in county ten. Because it's the lodging tax and tax, taxpayers vote on it. We like to be really transparent about where that money is being spent and I, I've been working with the communities. To put together articles to go on county ten that really explain where the money was spent. Um, some of the big things we're doing this year, you'll see that there's a big jump there in the, the second line under marketing campaign. Um, we're gonna do a, um, a big display ad in the Denver airport. Um, and I have tentatively reserved, and I say tentatively because we're waiting for the budget to get approved. But it's, it's been penciled in that we have the spot. Uh, the banner spot right above the escalator when you're going down to the train in the B concourse for the holiday season. So, um, we're looking at two months of advertising. Right there where people are stuck on the escalator and can just see that they should come to Wind River country. Um, another big project, um, that we are going to be doing is rebuilding our website. This is gonna be really beneficial for all of our local businesses. Uh, because what will happen is, um, they'll have a portal on our site. Which either they can enter their information into or we can do that for them. And it's, it's linked to the state site. So it's a company called Simple View. And when their information or their events or anything to do with our community goes on our site, it also appears on the state site. So that's gonna be really exciting for us. Um, we have added in, um, some market research and analysis. Um, I have been working, I've been trying to work with a company called E-Star for several years on getting hotel occupancy rates. And the problem is they can't actually give us those rates. And the occupancy numbers, um, unless there's three report, reporting hotels in each community. And Riverton in Wind, in Wind River Country area was the only area that had those three reporting hotels. Um, now they're doing a CoStar, which will look at countywide data. Um, and the, the cost for that per year is the five thousand three hundred. Um, you, another thing you'll see is air service marketing, um, which we, um, give to the FAST group. For marketing the airport, we kept that at thirty thousand. And what we've done is under the marketing campaign, you'll see there's a new opportunities line. Those are for projects that come up throughout the year that we are not yet aware of. And you'll see that there's a big drop there from what it is this current fiscal year. To what it is next fiscal year. And the reason for that is we've added in a board discretionary fund at the bottom. So the board can be more involved in the decisions of where those funded, that funding is spent. Um, we do have. Um, significant, um, we have a significant amount of money right now and, and we, um, so we're gonna move two hundred thousand to help complete some of these projects. Which takes us down to a zero over under expenditures. I'm gonna keep going with my notes. You should have this whole packet that I'm, I'm looking at here. Um, but. So, okay, looking at our revenue, nine nine four zero three four. Um, this was surpassed only by fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, which is called the revenge travel year. Um, and that's, that's just the general term that's been given to the year after COVID when everybody wanted to go on vacation. Um, that was the year that we had a revenue of one million sixteen thousand six hundred and ten. Which we thought was really significant and what it's looking like is this current fiscal year, we're actually gonna surpass, surpass that. So we are, uh, doing great. Whenever we hit over a million dollars, uh, which has been since I've been in my position, but actually never before that. Um, we are required by state statute to do a CPA audit and every single year we have no findings. Um, we're really proud of ourselves for that. And that, that held up this year as well, that, that our audit came out clean. And that, uh, we had a receipt for every single thing. Um. The lodging tax vote goes on the ballot every four years. Um, it passed in November twenty twenty-two with a seventy-two percent approval rate. The percentage in Shoshone was sixty-five percent, so it's a little bit lower than that, but the overall was seventy-two percent. It will go on the ballot again next year. Something that I like to really look at, and I, I look at this a lot is, and you should have this. It's our Fremont County Lodging Tax Collections graph. Um, and you'll see there the numbers at the bottom, they stayed around seven hundred thousand. COVID happened, we jumped up to the million. Went down slightly the year after that revenge travel year, we've gone up. And it looks like we're gonna be, um. My guess is probably one million, um, thirty thousand, maybe forty thousand, depending on. What summer travel looks like. And there is a little bit of question about that right now with, um, the way that. The way that the world is operating and just changes. Some of the big projects we've done this year, we worked with the tribes for the last two years on, um, putting together a video called Powwow on the Wind River Indian Reservation. And this is really to, um, inform visitors about what Powwows are. What we find is that the number one thing that people are Googling or searching for when they end up on our site is Yellowstone. The number two thing is the Wind River Indian Reservation. So the reservation is a really big role. We also put a kiosk on the Wind River Indian Reservation. Where, um, people can go, it's under, it's in the Frank B Wise Business Center underneath the, uh, gazebo there and they can go and it's touchscreen. Places to eat, places to go. It takes you to our event calendar. If you wanna check that out, um, it's actually a website, it's windriverreservation.com, which I couldn't believe was actually available. But that will take you to the, what the kiosk looks like. We don't really advertise that site because it looks more like a kiosk than a website, but, um, you should definitely check it out if you haven't yet. We are also putting together a resident sentiment survey, um, next month, um, in May. Is National Travel and Tourism Week. This is gonna come out then. And what it is, is to ask, this, it's to ask residents. How they feel about visitation. And we're working with the University of Wyoming and their research lab on doing this, um, and it's, the survey is actually. Um. Final, it was finalized yesterday, um, we're just working on the cover letter and then that will go out, um, May fourth to tenth. We also launched a podcast last year and we launched it last May. And the first podcast we did was on a hundred years of the Yellowstone Highway. The Wind River Canyon Scenic Byway. And we worked with a woman named Jackie Dorothy, who's a historian who has lots of knowledge. And we actually started that tour at the Riverton Museum, took people through Shoshone, went to the old jail. Um, heard all the stories, went down Wind River Canyon, soaked in some hot springs, came back and heard some more stories. So it was a really fun day. That was the official launch of the podcast and we have done one every single month. Uh, for the entire year, they, they released the fourth Thursday of the month. And they're incredibly popular. We try to make them fun and quirky. Um, so that people who are planning on visiting will listen, but also people who just kind of like that fun entertainment. Um, so that is really the. That's really our budget. Um, I am happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, we do this every year and, um, you're always welcome to ask questions throughout the year as well, though.
So pardon my ignorance, but. So we actually collect some lodging tax in Shoshone?
Well, anybody who has an Airbnb or so basically. Lodging tax is required to be collected. You have to pay lodging tax. If somebody stays in a rental facility for less than thirty days, so one night to twenty-nine. And if any Airbnbs, um, qualify for that, um, if people are, um, you know, renting out a room in their house, they're supposed to be paying it. Um, hotel rooms, of course, for anybody staying for less than thirty days. I will say in Shoshone, it's, it's pretty small. I think somebody hadn't paid because the last time I looked, it was negative sixteen dollars. So there's your number, but that was a while ago and it's there, it's mostly, we just look every month at the, um, the whole county. And then, uh, with the TAD program, we divide that TAD money up. Between DuBois, Lander and Riverton based on the percentage they bring in. So for example, if Lander brings in thirty-two percent, they get thirty-two percent of that twenty-five percent. And then based on what our lodging tax revenue has done, whether it's gone up a little bit or down a little bit, we adjust Hudson and Shoshone accordingly. Um, and as I mentioned, uh, the chief did a wonderful job of writing up some of the projects that this, this money contributed to. It's a lot of events, it's event staging. Um, there is limited funds. Oh, and I forgot to mention, this is, this is so important and I can't believe I forgot to mention this. Um, so with the lodging tax, we are very, very limited on where we can actually spend that funding. It needs to be spent on marketing efforts. And we can't do things like, um, we can't buy alcohol. We can't do political lobbying and we can't build infrastructure and that includes things like trails. Most signage, although informational signage is allowed. With the destination development money, we get that from the state and we apply for it every two years. Um, so far we've gotten three hundred thousand dollars, um, each time. New program, so it's only happened twice. Um, but one of the big projects that we have been working on is, um, wayfinding signage for DuBois, Lander and Riverton. And we took, um, we worked with a consultant to figure out that the style of each sign to really represent the communities. But also to make it look like it had a, a big, you know, we're, we're a county together. So a different look for each community showing its uniqueness. But also a big overall project. Um, I didn't know how much it was gonna cost. They gave us an estimate of three hundred thousand to five hundred and eighty thousand, depending on. Numerous factors. Um, I do have the final number now and it looks like we're able to add Hudson and Shoshone into that project. And so, um. I have already reached out to the contractor. Um, to ask how we move, because what Wyoming signs say, what do you want them to look like and where do you want them to go? And I said, well, we need our contractor for that because we tried doing it ourselves in Lander and walking up and down the street and taking notes just. Wasn't really working. So, um, so we are looking at adding, um, Hudson and Shoshone into that project. Um, with the destination development funding, we have to spend every penny. Um, otherwise we have to give it back. And so what we did with this project was we paid, we paid for the signage up to the penny. And then carried on into the next year. So now we're at the end of this spending. We want to, um, to, you know, work with the contractor, figure out signage and then whatever, we'll spend every penny again. And then next July first, so not this year, but next year, we'll be able to finish that project. Um, what we're looking at doing is maybe, and this is all kind of in the air still, but maybe three locations in Hudson and three in Shoshone. That would be more than three signs, um, because depending on where you're going, it's gonna be two to three signs. You enter the town. You see the sign saying, hey, we wanna go this way. Um, and now we wanna go left or now you're here. So it's, it would be two to three signs per location, three locations. Um, what I need from, from you is your town logo because the sign company would like to see it and I know you have a beautiful new logo.
Yeah, I'll.
So that would be great.
I have a suggestion for one side. We got a possessed alien abduction zone from the solar eclipse right here in town that we put up Stonehand Johns.
That would be amazing and that would be, that would be fun and quirky and we could do a podcast on it. But, um, but what, I guess what we're really looking for from, from the town council here, not tonight. But we do need the logo that the consulting company has already requested that. And then a small committee of people. Who would like to sit in a room and answer questions with the consultant and these questions are. Weird and fun, but they came out really well in the other communities. Like if you were to picture your community as a color, what color would it be? And, and they, they, they ask all these questions, but then they actually come up with some really nice designs. And when I was talking to them the other day, I had actually mentioned, um, the, the new logo. And they said that they were looking at some images and what they were seeing, uh, whether the town chooses to go that direction or not, but they were thinking. There's beautiful mountain views. Why wouldn't you wanna use those as part of your sign? Um, with the, the, the process, the way it works. We work with the consultants, we come up with the design, we work with Wyoming signs, everybody works with YDOT. The signs get fabricated, um, and, um, our logo is on the back, the Wind River Country logo to tie it all together. Because YDOT won't let us put it on the front, but they did let us put it on the back.
Got a lot of YDOT.
I, it's, you know, it has been, I had been told that working with YDOT, it was an experience and it really is, but they've been very. Friendly. There's a lot of letters and whenever you think you're done, you get another request. But it has worked out really well for us. So, um, we are moving forward this summer with DuBois, Lander and Riverton. Um, we, we, you know, we've done other. Um, we, you know, we've done other projects, uh, but this is the big one for the Destination Development and is something that lodging tax can't cover because it's infrastructure.
I think Hudson only needs to.
You need four. So that.
I'm just teasing.
And I am happy to answer any other questions, but basically, long story short, we are, we are doing, the county is doing really, really well with lodging tax revenue, we've got a lot of projects, we've got a lot of community support, the auditors like us, and we've got some, we've got some great projects in the works, including that Resident Sentiment Survey, which I think it's gonna be really interesting to look at as a whole, but also to look at in, on an individual basis, because I always look at this and I think seventy-two percent of people in the county approve the lodging tax, they're in favor of it. But then you look at the breakdown of each community, it's like, well, this one's a little lower, this one's a little higher. I'm really curious to see the breakdown for this Resident Sentiment Survey.
Yeah, the bigger town probably see the benefit of it more than, than we do, but it, it really helps our, the TAD money helps us.
The TAD money has been really supportive for lots of community events and other things we've done in Shoshone in my time, and I'm, I'm going on my fifth year in my position. But, um, we worked with Mayor Highsmith to get the digital sign put in Hudson, or in Shoshone, sorry. Um, and, um, and we've done, I mean, the, the podcast, we've done, we've done a lot of, a lot of projects. We try to split it up throughout the county and we also try not to think of the individual communities, um, you know, we want countywide projects. So we want things to, things to work together and we, you know, we like those partnerships and we always enjoy, I, I see some new faces here who weren't here last year and it's, it's neat to, to be back.
So you said Shoshone, uh, voted sixty-two percent or?
Did I say sixty-two or sixty-five? Um, give me one sec. So I think it was sixty, sixty-five percent and Shoshone voted in favor of the lodging tax. There were no communities that were, were really low, I think Shoshone might actually be the lowest. I think Lander was the highest at eighty percent, but the average for the county was seventy-two percent.
Even at sixty-five percent, you know, on a cert, you know, well, that's, that's high.
It is.
I mean, the fact that the average is seventy-two, that's phenomenal.
Yeah, and I'm happy to send those numbers, I got them from the county, um, with, with Shoshone, it's easy to figure out because there's one district, while with some of the communities, you have to add all of the pieces together.
I know. We definitely appreciate your TAD money. I started Shoshone on some nights with Chris's.
Oh, great.
And so we put on the basketball tournament, uh, the three-on-three tournament. And it's been, it's been help, uh, with advertising. Yeah.
That's great to hear. We can also help you advertise your events both locally and at a state level if you send us the, you just have to send us a flyer and we'll take care of it from there. Uh, but that email address, you can either reach out to me or it goes to community@windriver.org.
So if we had an event at the shooting range.
Send it to, please send us things, and once we're linked up, right now, we, um, we send things to the state just manually, but once we're linked up to that with our new website, it'll go on our website and it'll automatically end up on the state side as well, which is gonna be really exciting and it's also gonna save a lot of time in the office for people who, we, we actually have days where we've got a stack of paper flyers and somebody is just entering the information, you know, piece by piece into the site, and then we've got to do the same thing for the Wyoming Office of Tourism. So, um, this is gonna be a big game changer as far as actual integration and, um, and getting the, the word out about the events. Um, obviously with the lodging tax, our goal is to bring people to the county for an overnight stay. And, um, and if you look at this lodging tax numbers, I don't know, I'm, I'm pretty proud of how, how well we're doing with it as, and I say we as in the whole county, I mean, everybody is so welcoming to visitors and it's a really positive thing. Any other questions?
What's the, uh, on the, uh, fifty thousand dollar discretionary fund? What are they?
Yep, and, and that was, so we had a new opportunities fund, which is still there on the marketing campaign, it's line fifty-five. Um, you'll see that this current fiscal year, we had fifty thousand two hundred and forty-four and it's six thousand four hundred and sixty-nine. Um, we have a very active board and so we decided to split that up a little bit where the board has, um, and we, it basically it's projects that we don't know about right now, and the Resident Sentiment Survey would be a really good example of that. Um, you know, we are paying for that, it doesn't really fall under marketing, so that would be the kind of thing that could go under the Board Discretionary Fund.
What's the guidelines on what that can and cannot be spent on?
Well, we would follow state statute and we would, you know, it would be discussions amongst the board. Um, right now with the new opportunities, a lot of it is people coming into my office and saying, uh, we're doing a historical tour of the county and can you support this? Um, and that's also something with the TAD funding, if somebody comes into the office and says, we're having an event in Shoshone or we're having an event in Lander, then I can say, great, sounds like it might qualify, but please apply for a TAD grant with that community. So we really have different kinds of programs and, and adding in the Board Discretionary Fund, um, really gives the board the opportunity to participate in some of these decisions. But the money's just, it's just kind of moved from marketing campaign down to the Board Discretionary Fund.
I got that, I just wasn't certain if there's a policy in place determining what those funds can and cannot be spent on.
There is not currently, um, it is a new, it is a new line item.
No regulation on how it's spent.
Well, it'll be board discussions, just like, I mean, just like really anything, but it'd be more in the board's hands as opposed to staff.
It still has to be market. We can't use it for anything but.
No political lobbying, infrastructure or alcohol. I say that a lot.
No meals.
All right, I, I get the purpose of it, I was just asking what, what regulations or rules were in place for the fifty thousand dollars? That's what I was asking for.
Would you please come up?
Unless you determined it to be for marketing.
No.
Play, play louder, speak, let him introduce yourself.
We are the Destination Marketing Organization, so really the purpose of, the purpose of us is to market the destination.
Right.
I get that, I was just asking for what rules.
Yeah.
Are governing.
And that makes sense, and I think because it's a new line item, a lot of that is gonna be, um, figuring it out, but it does give the board, um, more, um, more say, I have a feeling and maybe, uh, we'll, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be emailing the board and saying, hey, we have this great opportunity, like the Resident Sentiment Survey, do we wanna move forward with this? So, um, yeah, um, that's really, that's really it.
So one last question for me, and that is, the banner at DIA, how did that happen to come about? Why choose DIA?
Well, okay, and there's several reasons for that. So a few years ago, when I first started in my position, um, I had approached the airport, um, to ask how much one of those banners was, and I was given a ridiculous price, and I thought, okay, well, that's way, way, way out of our budget. Um, but I ha, I have done quite a bit of research, I have lots of information about, about the advertising in DIA. The number one place that people visit our area from is Denver. And so, uh, the reason behind Denver is because the, both the locals in Denver who are using the airport will see it, as well as people who are traveling nationally or internationally. Um, Denver, the concourse B, which is where we would want this banner, is the busiest airport in, in the area. It's the busiest one in Denver, um, and there's just a lot of really good, um, marketing support. Looking at the data that we have, it, it just makes sense to advertise there, it wouldn't make sense to advertise in airports that people aren't visiting this area from anyway. And, um, we have a lot here which will attract both. So one of, when I was at the Lander City Council, they said, so what are we gonna advertise on this banner? And we're doing the banner in, um, in the holiday season, but there's so many things we could advertise and we have a little bit of time to figure out exactly what we wanna advertise because you only get so many words. One thing, of course, is our Powwows, and that might not necessarily hit the Denver crowd, but it will hit the people going through the airport, um, who are national or international travelers. Um, another campaign that I've really been looking at, and the more I talk to people and the more research I do, people wanna take a step back. They're, they're, the world is a busy place and they're looking for those vacations that really connect people to the outdoor environment. And so when I was at the Denver Airport last, um, I went and I stood and I stared at our banner space for a while and it didn't have a very good banner on it, and I was thinking, what would we wanna say here? And another option, um, is, who here has been to the, um, Papoche Falls, the, the part where you can slide down? So, so I was thinking, and I actually went back and looked up an image, but you know, two kids, boy and a girl, they've got their arms up, they're sliding down, they've got these huge grins on their faces, and so messaging something like, do you remember your first flight? Where it's like, hey, that's, where is that place, what is that? And then with a QR code, of course, they can go right to the website. So I realize those are two very, very different directions, um, to go with these, these marketing campaigns. But what we really wanna do is have an ad that stands out and hits somebody on that, um, that emotional level. Yeah.
It would be very interesting to see if that works out for you.
Yeah, yeah, well, and a lot of it is bringing awareness to our area and that's what we wanna do with marketing. We want somebody to say, what is that, where is that, who is that? And, um, if we can spark the curiosity, then, and we can get people to go to our site and we've got, you know, a beautiful site that, that really appeals to somebody, then we're that much closer to getting a visitor.
Yeah, good-looking website's important.
Yeah, and when we rebuild, it's, um, it's, we have spent, uh, the last few months working on our branding guide. Um, we had a branding guide, um, but what I was finding from staff and from people working on it, where they had questions, like, I don't really understand what this means or when this says this, what does this mean? So, um, so I got together everybody who does work for us, whether it's, um, on a contractual basis or staff, and said, what do you understand in this document, what do you, what don't you understand and what questions do you have? And we addressed all of that in the new branding documents, so our new website, and I'm pretty picky about how, I, I'm, I'm a little bit of a perfectionist, but we're, it's gonna be, it's gonna be seamless.
We had advertised at the com, with the college.
Mm-hmm.
Down at DIA, I'm not sure that it'd be anything.
Really?
But it was a location and it's a different flavor.
Yeah.
It had to do with higher education as opposed to, you know, G W sort of.
Travel, yep. Yeah, and it's, and it's one of those things where it's difficult to track, however, with the QR code, you can track how many people are actually going to your site. And that's one of the things that's, well, I find QR codes personally are not the most attractive thing in the world, they are a really good way of tracking who's actually going to your site, from which ads. Um, we, and we also have, we have a whole bunch of ways of tracking where exactly people are, um, coming to our site from. I'm happy to, I'm, and I'm happy to get into that, but I don't think we have enough time to get into how.
Mayor Pavilion asked me, Pavilion would be available to apply for some kind of funding also?
You know, it's, it's really interesting with Pavilion, we, we keep asking the, so the joint powers agreement is DuBois, Hudson, Lander, Riverton, Shoshone. Um, we also advertise other areas as well, Jeffrey City, the Wind River Indian Reservation. I would absolutely be thrilled to chat with Pavilion about marketing efforts there. We haven't worked with them very closely and I don't actually know why they weren't written into the, uh, joint powers agreement from nineteen eighty-nine and nobody, um, nobody who signed that agreement.
Don't call me the mayor.
Nobody knows, but I would, I would be thrilled to, I would be thrilled to talk to somebody, and they should absolutely be sending us their events. I know we have gotten events from them, um, but yeah, they're not, um, they're not currently part of our joint powers agreement, but that does not mean that we don't advertise them, kind of like Jeffrey City. And South Pass City too, although we always kind of think of them as part of Lander because a lot of what we do, we base it on zip code. And so South Pass and Lander are the same zip code.
Well, they're still part of Fremont.
Yeah, absolutely, yep, absolutely.
They're, they, they're trying to attract, they have some events, they're actually pretty good.
And Mayor, who would be the best person to talk to about these events? Oh, so the actual mayor?
The mayor, yeah, that's the, I'd be the best guy, best one to get a hold of.
Great, I will reach out to him.
I, I, I was chatting with him, uh, yeah, he'd be happy about that, he'd love it. And yeah, and I don't know why they, they wouldn't, if we ever redo that agreement, that would be something to try to get Pavilion in there. I know at the time, but Hudson, I don't think had a motel either, uh, going to have a motel, Shoshone used to have, they had several motels back then.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, I, but I, but I don't know why.
I, and I would love to see the reasoning behind our joint powers agreement because it's definitely got some, um, interesting pieces to it.
But in any event, yeah, so I told him I would ask that question while I was here. You know, now, basically, I think you, on, on employees, uh, you eliminated one full-time position, if I, and, and, and you added, made that full-time a part-time and then hired an additional part-time.
We have struggled with staff the past two years, so what, what ended up, so it was me and one other full-time person initially. And what happens is when that full-time person decides to go back to school or move or go on with life, I'm by myself. And last, last spring, I was by myself for four months, and this is a, this is a lot of work for one person. So with the success that we've been having is hiring numerous part-time people that fit into positions that they are interested in and good at. And, you know, the main thing is, we, we've all had staff, but you want somebody to, to like their job, to be interested in it, and if they don't have the skill set to want to grow into that position. And so what we did was we eliminated the second full-time position and, uh, and created some part-time positions. Um, one of those part-time positions was actually an intern that, well, we got, we got an intern from CWC and she has been absolutely incredible, um, she's a tech student and, um, so last week, we brought her in as a part-time staff because her internship was over, um, right now it's just me and her, we do need to hire additional staff. I wanna see how she fits in before we do that, as far as what position we actually need to hire for.
The, the plan is sort of hire two more?
Yeah, and, you know, and I forgot to mention Mel, Mel is our, she is one of our staff members, she does our event calendar, that's all she does. So she is, she is very part-time, um, her hours, five-ish, sometimes when I have her do a graphic design project, it goes up. But, um, but right now, we've got three staff, myself, full-time, um, we have a woman named Alex who is trying to remember what we titled her, our administrative technician, I think, she's admin tech person, and then our event wrangler, which is Mel.
I make the motion to approve the budget, ask Chris to let's.
Second. Then move, and second, we approve the budget, further discussion. Have a few more questions. The two hundred thousand dollars, where, where did that come from?
A lot of it is because we have been understaffed, and so what happens is when we write these budgets and we don't have staff, then that money falls into our reserves, um, we, we do have a reserve policy, we don't want too much money in there. So we're, we moved that over, but a lot of that is the staffing line.
So the budgeted amount, uh, last year was nine ninety-four, so we only spent seven ninety-four, two hundred thousand dollars.
We had, we had money from, it's been building up and we wanna spend it.
So, uh, the nine, the nine ninety-four is the money that we had received from tax.
Yeah, and yields.
The, the prior year, so we always know our budget.
Yep, and so if you look at, um, in your sheet, your Fremont County Lodging Tax Collections, you'll see that the last full fiscal year was nine nine four.
Right.
Zero three four, so that's where we get that number from, and then whatever the number is at the bottom this year will be the budget for next year.
Correct. So how mu, how much do we have in reserves?
We are, um, we are right around, well, and we have some of it as, uh, Destination Development Fund, but we are around a million. I believe, I don't have those numbers with me, um, and then with the Destination Development Program, you know, we're spending a lot of that on, um, the wayfinding signage, so that'll be a big check that gets issued all at once.
So, okay, so we have, we have, we have near, near a million plus the, the, the money and then plus the nine hundred and ninety.
Not, not plus, no, that's total. Um, we, we have a reserve policy where we try to keep at least, uh, fifty percent of our, um, budget in, and we're more than that right now, which is why we wrote that in, it's, we don't wanna sit on money, so we need to spend it. Um, but a lot of that is because we were understaffed. Um, but a lot of that is because we were understaffed and sometimes things go down in price, not usually, but mostly when we are understaffed, that, that adds up.
So you're, you're trying to keep around five hundred thousand in reserves?
That is the goal, at least five. I don't think we want to dip below that, but yeah, that, that is the goal um based on our reserve policy.
Okay, so this money had already had came in and the percentage had already went to CAD and every, every, every.
Oh, yeah.
Everything else. So that, that's already been out of that and that's money that just, that wa- that wasn't spent for whatever reason and it's been building up for multiple years.
That's correct. And with our budget, we, we try to spend every single penny of the marketing, um, because that's the main, the main focus. Sometimes it's more challenging to, you know, spend the, spend the uh staff salary if we don't have staff. Or, uh, give another example, when we didn't have staff, we weren't distributing as many brochures around town because that was what the other person's job was. So we didn't have to print as many, which is not a positive thing.
So we're break, you're breaking out, uh. Uh, I would ask. The board elected to give you a ten percent raise this year approximately.
Um, that is not what we wrote in. What we wrote in was um, the payroll um at one eighty-two, nine, seven, six, that would include myself and all part-time staff, which comes to twenty-four point nine three percent of the budget. Um, the recommendation um for the state, um, and I actually think it might be for the country too, but from our advisor, we were told that we should try to keep our staffing line at twenty-five to forty percent. So we're actually slightly below that. Um, I do not have an actual breakdown of the staff members because we're still trying to figure out exactly who we're gonna hire, how many hours. Um, and I'm aware, and I'm, this is probably what you're referring to, Mayor. Um, I'm aware that Pat Novo had asked for a breakdown and we gave her an anticipated breakdown. And it's actually um, what I did with that was just wrote in five percent, not ten percent. Um, which is what we did this year, but we haven't actually determined that number yet. I think that the numbers that she's basing it off, um, she looked from last June. Um, I didn't receive my yearly review until January, and so the salary was lower. So she's using that instead of my current salary. While with, uh, when I was estimating, I was using my current salary, um, and then um, added in five percent, which is what, which was the salary increase from last year. But once again, we have not written that into the budget. We were going off of the recommendation that we stay between twenty-five and forty percent for staff and we're at twenty-four point nine, nine, three. So we're just below what the recommend, recommendation is for this industry.
So your current salary isn't eighty thousand?
My current, no, my current salary is um eighty-four, two, six, two, fifty. So the number that, the number that um, that Mayor Novo was referring to was a five percent increase from that.
Okay, yeah, the number, yeah, she was using was eighty-eight, four, seventy-six. And eighty thousand, two fifty was the number.
Yeah, and I think, and that was what it was previously till January when I had my annual review. Um, but once again, we are figuring out staff and salaries. And we want to have the strongest team to grow our lodging tax. And that's why I'm holding off on advertising a position until we know where exactly Alex fits in. We just upped her hours Monday. Um, and she's now a, a regular staff member instead of an intern. So I want to see where the gaps are, uh, what we need. Uh, my guess is we're gonna need a customer service representative. Um, maybe do some more graphic design in-house, things like that. But um, I'm, I want to build a strong team like we all do. And when you, when you think you've got it and then somebody goes back to call it your moves, it's just, it's difficult.
All right, yeah, I think you need, I, I think, uh, I think you're going down the right track if that works on part-time and and get, I think you need more people, because you need more.
Yeah, we need more people. And what I really, what I really would love to have is a bustling office with a lot of excited people. Um, the benefit line did go down and that's because we reduced the full-time positions. It's just one full-time position now. But um, I, yeah, I want to have a staff where people are friendly and run into each other and you know, right now it's me and one other person and she's twenty hours a week, so half the time it's quiet.
Yeah, see, I, memory serves me right. I thought last year you got a seven percent raise and a three percent bonus.
No, that would, last year I got a five percent increase. That was the year before, I believe, yes.
Just. That's what I remember. And one, we did, one year we did a wage adjustment. And that was a, a, a pretty big jump. Was like from sixty-two to seventy-five.
That, it was a big jump. Um, and that is because when the Winter Visitor's Council had a marketing agency um, and switched to an in-house staff.
Right.
They weren't sure what the position was and the position was a lot bigger than anybody had anticipated. So that was where that, that was where that uh salary adjustment came from um initially. It's a, it's a big job. It's um, it's very, very busy.
And I feel you do a good job at it.
Thank you.
Like that.
Thank you.
So what was your new hire? What, what was her major?
Um, she, she's got two. She's um, computer science and um, software programming. She works with Matt. Her and he's the one that I had asked him, he kept fixing our kiosk. It was on the, the one on the reservation. We couldn't figure out why it kept shutting down. And it was whenever, it would shut down whenever there was a Windows update. So he went out there and I said, hey, any chance you can send us an intern? Um, because we have had interns in the past, um, but I, I was really hoping for somebody um with the technology skills. And he sent her and she has just been so incredible. I have been thrilled with her. And we only had her for a hundred and fifty hours on her internship. That ended last Friday and so this Monday she started and uh, we try to be a little creative with positions. So she took over the admin assistance position, but she was also doing technology. So she came up with the name administrative technologist, uh, which fits well with our event wrangler. Um, and we're gonna have to keep with the creative theme and hopefully it makes our budget look professional and not unprofessional.
So you ha- you got, you got a rage, raise in January?
I did.
See, I'm, I look, I, I don't know, I came with the same figures Pat did. I looked at the year before his budget and then included the, the salary. And so. You didn't get a raise last July, you didn't go.
No, I got a raise the last time. So I got a raise in January. It was actually supposed to be in November, but our board president was out that day. The previous raise was the November before.
So I looked at the last couple of years' budget, which, you know, has the salary break down.
We, yeah.
And I seen the eighty thousand, I think that's what Pat, that Pat divided.
We don't have that number yet. Uh, you know, we, we just have, and we really did try to keep it. So twenty-five to forty percent is the industry standard. We're at twenty-four point nine three percent. We are going to be hiring additional staff. Um, I have not done the breakdown. It's, you know, we're, we're doing our job. We're doing it for less than the industry str- industry standard. Um, and, yeah, and I'm feeling really good about our budget and the projects that we're doing this year.
I'd just like to review that. I think ten percent is, is excessive for, for a year. And that's what the information that I looked at. I just like to look at it. And if it's five, five percent, I got, and I'd just like to confirm that.
Well, I have those numbers. So um, so eighty, so the current salary is eighty-four, two, six, two point fifty. You multiply that by point zero five, then the total comes out to eighty-eight, four, seven, six, which is the number that Mayor Novo.
That was a raise, that was a raise you got in January this year.
No, that's, that's, that's not happened. My, my current salary is eighty-four, two, six, two, fifty. Uh, the mayor in Du Bois had asked for um, what my, what our anticipated salaries were going to be next year. We don't really have them, but I did an estimate for her. And based off of that, I used the five percent that I got this year.
So, yeah. But you didn't get a raise in January this year?
I did, which took us to that number.
And you, and you, your next raise will be?
I don't, I don't know. Um, you know, with the last one, it was November and then it was the following. I didn't get one for over a year. We don't have a set schedule for that. We try to have the board president there. Look at what I'm doing. Um, sometimes things are so busy, we don't even have time to do this, the evaluations. But, but typically I have not gotten a raise on the, the same month every year.
Looking at the year before's budget and that, it, uh, I just go and look back the last couple of years' budget and uh, that's can, you know, it confirmed the eight, the eighty thousand, I didn't uh. Which was.
I have not gotten a raise every year on the same month. It's been, it's been over a year each time.
Okay, yes. I just, personally myself, I'd just like to wait two weeks and you wouldn't even have to come again. Just confirm that, that, that's just me personally. Cause you do a great job.
Thank you. And I, I would request, um, I would request if the council is able to vote on it tonight, we, we would like to move forward with, with marketing campaigns and um. This process sometimes has dragged for months and months and it would be wonderful if we, if the, if the council would consider, and the mayor um, approving our budget tonight so that we can be one step closer to moving forward with our marketing campaign for next fiscal year.
I'd just like to be in a place where I could depend, depend the budget a little bit, catch whack over salary at uh.
And I call the vote.
No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote aye. Motion passed four to one, Mayor. Voted nay.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just, or, uh.
Wait, I'll say it.
So I, I've known the mayor for quite some time, so I have to say this and council members, this is in all due respect, but I had an idea, Chris, and when they were talking about the signage, that would be, you know, she was talking about the three signs that would take three more signs. I, I, just as an observation, but maybe one sign that says, here's where you pay your speeding ticket fine. Maybe don't speed.
Well, your, your ticket's waiting for you.
Blows you.
Thanks guys, appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
All, all in favor, raise your right foot. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Nice evening.
Thank you, congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, ours. Motor safe. HDR payment app.
HDR payment application number two.
So this is the SCADA project, um, it is. Hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents to Electrical Dynamics, uh, for the SCADA award. As we start moving forward, a lot of this is pre-buying the, the uh, material, um, and down payment for the project. To get started.
And a motion to approve.
Approved.
Been moved by Councilman Ordin?
Yeah.
I heard divorce, have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stettler, discussion. Any discussion?
Did we have this prior budgeted? Cause I don't know what our.
All these are all budgeted. These are the grants that were awarded, so they're fully budgeted for the uh, amount of the award.
So what, what was our match on this?
Uh, this one? Sixteen, seventeen percent. But right now they're getting paid out a hundred percent because it's ARPA trying to disperse all the money.
Okay, so. I was just curious if that was gonna potentially alter our next, but that's all my.
No, it's, it's already included into the next budget.
Nothing like. Any, any more questions? Done being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, polls the same. Motion passed on affirmative. Trailhead Project Bid Award.
So uh, EA um, put out for a rebid on the Trailhead project, uh, received two um bids. Uh, the summary's attached to their um worksheet. Really what, looking for tonight is some discussion on this before we proceed, probably with an award. There's some things I think we need to consider before we move forward, but.
Yeah, they actually received three bids, one bid came in, in the mail and came in too late. I, yeah, like two o'clock or something.
Two are considered.
And it was, yeah, and it, it was the, ten o'clock was the shut-off date, so they didn't handle it till they lost out. Uh, there were, there was two, two bids. One of the bids did not have the, actually apparent little bidder did not have all of the proper paperwork done. So EA not make a recommendation to accept that. The bids were very close, what, near three thousand separating. I don't have, it burned me something like that.
Three thousand, roughly.
Yeah. So. Marshall, would you like to? What do you think of?
Say that again?
How do you feel on that? There's, like I said, one bid not have, did not have all the proper documentation. It did not have the sign, the main thing, did not sign the.
Right, so um. That's a default in the bid and even if they may came and come in lower, that's up to the council. You can reject that bid if they don't comply with the requirements for the bids.
So they didn't comply, but what's the impact to us? I mean, it's a signature page, it's gone. So that means they're really not committing to the bid? Is that what they do? So they could raise the, or change the price or is I think?
Think. No, and me, it means it was probably a mistake, right? But either way, it's up to the council. If you feel that the bid wasn't if they didn't comply with the requirements of filing everything with the bid, because my understanding is you're saying that there are packets that were supposed to come in or attachments that weren't included as well?
Yeah, there was multiple things wrong with the bid. And so we, EA could not recommend they, that we accept that they said they normally, that would be a disqualifier. And that, that was what, actually thought she might be here today.
Well, in her, in her note, she said that, in the summary, she said that uh, um, it was incomplete because of the omission of the um EC or EJ CBC C four-ten signature page. Um, as she recommends, or states that when a document is omitted from a bid package, it's standard procedure to reject the bid as non-responsive. However, Dustin Bros, the owner of B and M, requests the town consider to make an exception to this omission, noting that he physically signed the bid tabulation form, which EA says is true. And his bid tab did have a signature. That's what her comments are.
So which of those signatures are binding for bid?
Well, if he signs it, any part of it, so it's binding. If he may, so here's the thing, if he put, if someone was to put out uh, you know, any kind of communication that this is my, I, I'm gonna abide by this, you can reasonably go with that as a contract, right? Because now you're reasonably believing that they're gonna, they sent communication. They have, there's a signature. So, yeah, you, you could go with it, but at the same time, you very well could get rid of it too. You feel that, well, they didn't abide by, you know, the bid by turning everything in.
Did she mention there was something else that?
That's, that's all she put.
Okay.
So there was something else she didn't include it.
Yeah, there was at least one, one other. She thought that was the most important one of every other other things, I don't, but. You know.
The other one that mailed it was bets, is that what that means?
Pardon?
The other one that mailed in was bets?
No.
No, so she could make a formal decision because there's no bid from bets. So there's no way to make a formal recommendation.
We we don't know until the electric bid comes in. We've been the electric separately until we. Get that, that's, we're supposed to have that bid, we don't have it, to make sure what we can fund. Because the electric could be considerably. They, we're doing a lot more electric than, we're we're having to bring in a new line in and everything. Wasn't wasn't in involved and initially, we didn't anticipate that.
I think at this point, then we don't. Do anything with either bit. We don't know what the other bid is, how can we approve something and it come in higher and put ourselves in harm's way, so I think this bid. Needs to be tabled.
We could. If if the bid, if that comes in too high, we could do part of this. And not the, we can reduce.
I think.
The scope, we can reduce the scope of work to make it fit the money.
Based off looking at this. I'm just here, take it for what you want, everybody else, I think we should reduce the scope of the work anyway. Irregardless of the situation. I think there's a structure there that could be. Revamped, new roof. Bathrooms put in. And minimal landscaping, I drove down there about the time uh before April eighteenth. The money that was spent on the road mill parking lot is already toward a ship. By whatever out of sight, out of mind teenagers spinning cookies, whoever's been in there, whether it's teenagers, adults. That parking lot is tore up. Bad. And I fear of any further money being put into this. At. This amount. I have a huge fear of this being. One of those things we look at and go, boy, did we piss away grant money. And I just think we could reel in the scope. And if we don't spend what we're allotted in this grant, we can send it back. And the next time we need grant money for whatever that is. I think they're gonna say, you know, these guys are frugal and be apt to consider us quick. That's where I stand.
Who's the grand tour? State parks, actually Orec, the Outdoor Recreation Division of State Parks.
And so I spent two days with them, Riverton. Those two days of the.
I don't think we should walk away from it, I don't wanna see that happen. But I think we could turn that into a nice pavilion. Put some picnic tables in there, run around. Put in some bathrooms, obviously fix the electric piece. That parking lot's gonna need addressed again.
Well. We depends on what we got with the scope, we might still. See what it needs down there, once we get power and everything up there, uh we we will have surveillance up there that. Watch it, that's why it got. You know. The the old one got got so tore up so bad over the years.
I get, I get that. I just. I think this is a lot. Of money. For a park.
Well, it's not for a park, it's a trailhead and there was a hundred and fourteen applicants, three were approved, that's how, well, the state. Thought of this project, thought very highly of it, and they're very excited that that we, I had talked with Rin and. Chris has talked with her multiple times, but I talked with her, we were letting that, and they're pretty excited about that.
I'm not saying we don't do anything, I'm saying I think we could reel in the scope of the work and reduce the cost of this project. And open ourselves. To potential grant money later on down the road. For whatever that is. I'm just saying, I don't think we should pull all the eggs out of the basket. And put them in another basket and and bank on one thing, I think we could utilize. I mean.
We're not looking for approval tonight, are we? Is that, that's kind of what I thought I heard you say.
We could have approval. Once we get this in, we could negotiate if we need to negotiate. If we need to leave something out.
We don't even have the electric bid.
But what I'm saying, once we know that, we'll have that, but we we can table it if you like.
I like the idea of table. We just don't have all the information yet. And is there a um? Forgive me, I probably gave given this to us, but. I'd like to see what the bid. Was for, kind of what they're gonna be doing and what is.
That in in the package?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah, scroll down. That's what I thought. Page thirty nine.
Well, anyway, for table it, I can look it up later, so I I'm gonna tell me, I think table it, it makes sense to me.
I'll make the motion to table it.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Hardkey, second by Councilman Nordin to table the. The Trail Trailhead uh project uh. Bid. For our next council meeting, is that correct? Any further discussion?
I'll abstain.
Hey, note that Councilman Stettler has abstained from the vote, all in favor say aye. Motion passed on the affirmative. Public works, we don't have.
Please.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong. Deal, please. Don't say we did public works last time.
I was going. Uh, I'll be pretty quick. So our calls for service and activities. Continuing to increase year over year um still. Which is good and bad. Um, it's good in the regards to the majority of it, um comes down to self initiated activity as opposed to. Being called after the fact and things. Still having some issues with dogs um running around, we are trying to actively uh address that. We do have that uh text my app up on our website now, so you can. Send a text and we'll get that in real time, so you don't have to call us, you can text it. And so that, there's a little widget on there, if you go to our website, the town's website, it's the little text my gov right there, and there's a number. That you text an information to, and it will send us an alert for dogs, barking, things of that nature, um so you can say. Where it's at and we can pinpoint it. We did have two um. Animal related problems that we took care of in March involving dogs at large. Dogs barking at night continues to be somewhat of an issue. And as summer gets here. We're going to. At this point, go into enforcement with citations, cause it's. Asking, talking, requesting, isn't helping, and when dogs are barking really silly at. Two o'clock in the morning, enough's enough. You know, I mean, I know it's barking dogs, but at the same time, it's disrespectful to everybody else around, so. I I know that's, so that's our biggest issue that we're worrying about going into the summer for law enforcement, I think that's a good thing, but um. It it remains a nuisance and. That is gonna be a double downing on focus of the summer. As well as enforcement of uh kids at night, as we do every summer, we increase our patrol into the evening, um which. Has shown over the last three years to precipitously drop our incidents of vandalism. Thieves and things of that nature, go figure, you know. It's weird correlation. As far as the Riverton, Riverton, we haven't been helping them like we were last year, um they've gotten staffed up for the most part. They still do request us, cause we have certain. Equipment that they don't have. That. On a case by case basis, they do call and request us to go help for those things, but those are limited to those not actually working, patrolling the streets of Riverton as we were doing. Uh, the task force is still uh very much active, um this last time, we happened to be operating the task force in Riverton. When that standoff thing happened, so it was convenient that we were already there, not just us, but Lander, extra officers and. Were able to funnel into that um and help facilitate that as well as our um our drone was deployed that we have. Um, to go into the house and see what's going on, which is kind of good and useful information when you're dealing with something like that. There's some other um. Activities. I would be happy to if council's curious on things, um we can discuss those in a uh uh executive session setting, I can't. Uh, discuss them openly here, but there's. Other issues that are, not, I would say issues, but other facets of law enforcement that are taking place besides. What you see every day. Um, and we are very active on that front. That's pretty much all I got, um April's already been a busy month, even with me gone on vacation. They stayed pretty active while I was gone. Any questions? Oh, our patrol vehicle is slated to be done in the mornings. Retrieving that and.
I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't hear the control of the patrol vehicle.
The the new one that was that we had, but we've been waiting to get outfitted, it it's slated to be done in the morning. Yeah, so.
So I have to start looking for a new vehicle to watch out for.
Or just don't speed.
Well, I gave it away.
Black one, huh?
So now you gave the secret away. Yeah, so that one will be uh done um. Uh, tomorrow, so. We can, I like, I can talk more in executive session or or interpersonally one on one, but I just can't do it in this setting.
Yeah, I drove a new Durango to Riverton one day.
You got three speeding tickets.
A gift, a gift from your police officer.
It's gotta have me. Any questions? Chris?
I really wanna make a wisecrack about playing bingo, but I won't.
I I agree with you, do it.
I don't know why they had a heartburn about that, honestly.
You know, particularly if they were making things up, it's just.
Or if you've got officers that are arresting people or doing that stuff to uh win a bingo game, you need to let them go anyways. So I I sent him some wisecracks about adjusting the budget to make sure there's plenty for bingo cards and such.
It's a good fundraiser. We did it in Lander.
Don't know the police bingo, where you like arrest three people in one car. Check that one off.
Still a great fundraiser for the police department.
We could all bet on who's gonna win.
So, Mark, you wanna talk about the A two A?
This uh last Friday was our last meeting, so it, the project is officially done. Bits are coming in, so that process is moving, but it just took forever to get all of that in, and there's still more, I'm sure that are coming. Uh, but overall, I think the A two A project was, it's, it was a methodology on how to work on big projects with. For getting a lot of input and then fine tuning what you were trying to do, the process is a good process. It just, it just was, our our contractors, however, did not. You know, support us very quickly, which helped us, which kind of stalled up. It's construction, it just slowed it down a lot, so anyway, so it's, it was a good process and we are. Excuse me. The plan is to continue, but not quite at the frequency that we had in the past, and we still haven't decided that. But. These uh, everybody is pretty much willing to volunteer their time to help keep going for the goodness you're showing the projects that are coming up. I still think a dog park is a good idea.
So, yeah, I I think we may made a belt this in the. Some, some sort of board or something. To help the, to help the town in the future to to move forward on on this.
Maybe like one of our committees, like the rifle range committee.
Yeah, something like that, yeah, something like that uh. And uh. Mark can continue to chair it and I can sort of get, try to. Get get separated from that and. Kind of needed to help get it off.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But yeah, that was, that was real, real helpful, the bounce ideas off of multiple people and. And uh, yeah, I I thought it was really a success in getting that done. Like I said, we'd waited on, we'd like to have more information, we didn't get it from our, from our engineer doing the P E R and. Gas company and I mean, everybody was slow. Jake, talk about trailers.
Yeah, so there was some complaints about our lack of action on trailer houses, so what I was proposing, I didn't wanna go through the whole. Changing the ordinance process until we had a somewhat of a consensus of what everyone would accept, so we could just make this. Simpler, that's why I wanted to do it in this form, currently. The only requirement is you have to conform to the nineteen seventy four safety standards. And what I would like to propose is that we change the ordinance on fifteen dot four, be. Add a subsection six, it says all mobile home or travel trailer permit applications. For units over twenty years old must be accompanied by electrical plumbing and structural reports issued by a licensed professional. As well as photos to prove adequate maintenance has been performed. And that would, I don't, I don't wanna be over restrictive to the point where we're not letting. People do what they want on their private land. But we need to have maybe a little bit more oversight, so we have less upset citizens. And I felt like twenty years was a reasonable time, I did, like the trailer with the Tasha, we did the variance in hindsight, I don't think we needed to do a variance. Because we had the electrical inspection, said that it was currently safe and all that. Although the trailer was older than nineteen seventy four, it did conform. To the standards. So I, I don't know, I'm not real sure, but part of me thought if we struck that. The nineteen seventy four deal and just made it straight across the board, you have to have anything over twenty years, you have to have inspected to sign off. On electrical plumbing structural.
What is the structural? What what instruct what structural?
Uh, there's something like, yeah, it has to be able to hold like what twenty P S I per square.
Snow load. Yeah, twenty pounds.
Twenty pounds per square foot of snow load. And then I was talking about like rotted out floors, I mean, you gotta have a. Car a licensed carpenter going to say, yeah, this thing's structurally sound. I'll sign my company's name to it. If some of it would be a safety, well, it would all be safety except for the photos to prove that maintenance has been performed. So if it. If it's example. A twenty or two thousand one, you gotta provide this. You still get a permit, no variance required, no nothing. Other than you have to provide electricians, plumbers and carpenters signing off.
Oh, um, Jim, it's all right. I'd like to point one thing out about your code. It's not nineteen seventy four, it's nineteen seventy four. Or it's meant to and has amended too. So every year that's amended. But that code does need to be updated because names changed as well. As far as the uh regulation and the name of it, so.
So if we took that code out and did the twenty years, that would put us.
It'd still put you way behind with it. And so the manufactured homes are also required to have certifications. That come with them. And so those are other things you're going to want to look for. This is stuff I've learned from. Representing mobile home parks and dealing with at mobile homes. So. What some people like to tear those plates off. So then now you also have issues because I also have this bin. Next, they also have the bin numbered and the title on them. I mean, there's a few things that as I was looking at, probably need to get out of there as well because once that's taken off, well, that's all kinds of problems for people. Just transferring, it's like, you know, transferring vehicles without an in number.
Serial numbers off the guns.
Yeah, well, no, it's I'm I'm not kidding. It's a real nightmare for the town. Yeah, dealing with mobile homes that don't have everything they're supposed to have.
Is there a national standard, you know, uh certifying standard, you know, for electrical code, there's a national thing that does it, you know what?
There is, that's what I was saying. So your your code hat refers to that, but the name of it's changed. It's actually a. Is looking it up. It's a. Code Federal Regulation Title twenty four subtitle B, Chapter twenty, Part three, one thirty two eighty. And the title of it is manufactured home construction and safety standards. And it's extremely lengthy.
So you're suggesting that we we put that in our in our code?
Well, if you want me to do that, I can, yeah, update that code, but there are certain things beyond just the. Inspection electrical like I would, you know, I need to have. Make sure the certification title's there, the bin number, you know, plate is still attached. Things like that because it is impossible to try to transfer one of those if someone passes and it's not in there or they, uh, you know. Abscond and leave town and you're stuck with the mobile home. You know, you're trying to deal with that on a on a uh empty lot. Now you're it just makes it harder.
So before they move those in. On your dealings, how, what is your process that you're familiar with of verifying that? Because we don't want to move it in and then verify, right?
Because it's. Right, you know, I mean, it'd be essentially that they'd have to provide the the title and then inspection or inspection of actually going and inspect it, make sure the. Certification plates there, the the identification plate still permanently attached. I mean, that'd be part of your inspection.
They'd have to have that done by whatever long for eight, what whatever before they moved it to us.
Yeah, and actually provide the title to it.
So who does that? I mean, with it with a car, the VIN inspection is done by a police force.
Yeah, it's it's done. It's done by the police force everywhere. And it's the same as car. So you, yeah, you see mobile homes, so everybody thinks though they're like home, but it's a train to like camper or car.
Well, I I say yes, I mean, I would really hope we need that to be, we need that to be right. That's that makes it fair for everybody. You know, a defensible for everybody. And I like what you're doing here, Jake, with you as far as, you know, making sure that it's in the code or in our whatever. And.
Well, twenty years puts us newer than the seventy four.
It does, and it also, you know. For those that are older, they go through this and they, you know, having this.
My, yeah, so my intention was, once you get past a certain age, there's still an avenue that. They could, the people could follow to it. But there'd just be enough steps to ensure we're not bringing in hazards and eyesores.
And so if you guys want me to draft something that includes both, I can definitely do that.
That's why I didn't want to do like an ordinance. I knew I didn't know enough to do that. I was just trying to get this exact thing to happen. That was my intention.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to give me, if 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 you want me to, then I'll draft one and give it to the council and debate and change it as well.
Yeah. Uh, the one thing that's not on here that and there may be more, but um. When I drive around town and look at, you know, particularly the older homes, I mean, the skirting and I mean, it's. It's there or not, and it's it frankly looks kind of pathetic. And I think a lot of times the skirting. Doesn't get done because.
Well, it's town code. It has to be skirted within such.
Thirty days.
It's already in the town code. It has to be.
Well, and that's something like that. House down here, like we really need to light a fuse on cleaning up some of this junk.
Also, and I know some town code has said that it has to be occupied or removed. It does. It's in the town code, so any abandoned trailers. I mean, my, I'm not, the way I interpret it, any abandoned trailers, we can go after landowner or remove them.
Well, there's.
Even if they were lawfully placed, if they're not being occupied.
Well, in that regard, Tasha's is on Sixth Street has been unoccupied for some time. Is it the one on the corner with uh? The highway? Uh, that one has been unoccupied for a while. For years, it's that it's that northwest corner, northeast corner. To be exact, sixteen years that I know.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's some on some other spots that. You know, we we could obviously Joel or I could drive around Jake being here a long time. And can probably point them all out and write them down. Um, and there's some others that started doing some cleanup that stopped. Um, but unoccupied as well.
And that's not my intention to ride on anybody on private property, but. They become a hazard.
Well, and it's it's in a town. It's not out somewhere hidden behind some, you know. Butte on the, you know, twenty miles outside of town. I mean, so it's it's in our town. You know, and when you live in a town. You know, you're responsible to the town.
Right, but that's uh is already the my interpretation was that that's already in there that it has to be occupied.
So if you add Marshall, if you take a look at that and revamp that, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, and and just uh get on. Little information on the dating because we went through one nation's trailer and you can get more information on Chris on. What I think he's looked at what's it costs to remove a mobile home, so let's. I'm not talking about that.
Was about thirty five hundred, probably more than that now, probably culture to five thousand.
Yeah, because we have, there's one we already went through the process and I think part of the issue is trying to get the guy to pay for it. Uh, I'm not too sure. So I'll have to talk to Chris about that.
Well, and then that one of that northeast corner of Sixth and the highway, it uh. I mean, it's got the extension built onto it and things. I mean, it's going to be a problem to move that thing.
Windows are all broken up.
Yeah. Yeah. And they're living out of town. They're not, they're out of state. Looked at the map server thing.
I don't know, couldn't.
It's in what?
Highway, right there behind Kinder Morgan.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Wyoming, that's Wyoming, right? The highway's Wyoming.
No, Idaho.
Idaho.
I knew it was substate, you know. Idaho is highway twenty to me, all right? So.
Well, good, that's we got a plan for that.
Stepped in around right.
Yes, it is.
And the other thing I want to, we could talk about later too, I guess, but. We we talked about the. Third street off a show bond. I said they would look at widening that and they they said they did, they gravelled it. I I don't know what legal city street width is. But I was out there and there's two cars coming. Somebody's got to pull off the road and it is a city street. And they did a beautiful job of spreading gravel on a one lane. But I I don't know what we're gonna, what we have to do to make it that city street a legal width city street. Where two vehicles can pass each other. Because the landowner out there is pushing pretty hard, hopefully within the year to have a business out there. That would increase traffic like just.
I got a business further down, but I'd like to have.
Not on show bond on third street.
Well, I know I'm on show bond. I I'd like to have some road improvement.
Yeah, but you know what I'm talking? If there's a semi going to turn into that law. Somebody's got to pull off in the borrowed ditch. I guess. I don't know what you call it on a two track road, but. That's not.
Creative driving.
What?
Creative driving.
Well, it ain't going to be the semi, I guarantee you. So we we might see some semi traffic and. Increasing in that. Manufacturing zone. But then we were also talking about rezoning that. Can a guy rezone that to commercial?
Yeah.
It's, I know we can't spot zone, but you got industrial and unzoned. But it's not a manufacturing or any of that. It would be a commercial usage.
Don't you look at it?
I told him to send you, send a letter to Town Hall requesting it, I guess, would probably be the best bet. And go from there. Would that be the proper avenue?
Yeah, we do that. Uh, look at it, bring it, bring it to the government, bring it to the council, kick it around. Uh. Okay, current usage.
Well, current usage is vacant land.
Yeah. And neighbors.
And neighbors are all unzoned, yeah.
Cool.
They they want to start building a business there. And there's different. Building requirements for manufacturing versus commercial. And the usage would be commercial, so we would like to have a zone commercial so that the building requirements would match. A business rather than a manufacturing.
Let's have a submit letter, I guess.
Yeah, that that worked.
I will shut up at this point. Thank you.
Uh. Grant Rain Summit was really. Informative uh. Uh, it's been four days well spent. It's always always learn something there. Uh. The interaction with other with other people, we had all the funding people there. Uh, like I said, I sat two days with Bryn, first two days of the meeting. Um. There's uh, we may have may have found some funding sources for the. Uh, Wyoming Cardinal Polymerate Project, the lower interest loans uh. And another couple other funding spots, uh places uh. Uh, that could possibly help the city in in the future. Uh, there again, a lot of interaction. Got to speak with the the new uh EPA Region Eight Director. And we talked a little bit about the many to divide. And uh. Other economic uh possibilities, so. That was a. That was a busy session. It's uh been very, very good to have Chris at that. That would have been 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 good and been a good thing. In any event, I have a motion to adjourn.
I made the motion.
Then I moved by Councilman Hardkey to adjourn. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jordan. Any further discussion, none being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those same motion uh nine twenty seven.